Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Present.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Present.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 13th, 2020. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on our work session, we have a presentation from the borough engineer concerning the project that we're doing on 94th Street. So I'm going to move and we can begin the presentation.
First of all, I'd like to thank mayor and council for being afforded the opportunity to make this presentation. The goals of our presentation are to provide information and background for the need of the project, explain the details of how we will facilitate the construction, and list the action items that the borough must accomplish to make the project happen. Okay, before we move on to the project details, we're just going to take a minute to review the borough's existing sanitary sewer system. The borough's existing sanitary sewer system comprises of gravity sewer mains, three pump stations, two of which you see up there on the screen are owned and operated by the borough, and their respective dates that they were constructed. And one is owned by the Cape May County MUA located adjacent to the marina. The 114th Street pump station services the southern portion of the borough, shown in that shaded area there. That pump station pumps sanitary sewer flow up into what I would call the main grid located at 111th Street, which is the main body of the borough. Flows through the main body of the borough all come to 93rd Street pump station, which you can see is encompassed by not only the southern portion as well as the purple portion. The 93rd Street pump station was built circa 1930, and as you can see by the shading, pumps approximately 85% of the flows through the borough, so it's a very important pump station to the borough. At that point, sewage flows into that pump station, leaves the pump station by a force main, and pumps into the Cape May County MUA pump station located by the marina, and then it makes its way north into Avalon. At this point, we're going to orient you to the project site and how we're going to construct this project. The borough owns and operates, as I had mentioned earlier, the 93rd Street pump station, which is located near the intersection of 93rd Street and 3rd Avenue. That pump station, due to its age, was determined to be in need of replacement. It was identified to be relocated in favor of a storm sewer pump station, which is being funded by a FEMA grant. As you may recall, I believe it was late last year, the borough purchased a vacant lot next to the borough's parking lot on 2nd Avenue, known as Block 9303, Lots 79 and 81. In order to make this swap, so to speak, we need to construct a sanitary sewer pump station on the vacant lot. We will need to install gravity sewer mains from the connection point in front of the pump station, easterly down 93rd Street, southerly down 3rd Avenue, easterly on 93rd, excuse me, 94th, through the borough's parking lot, and into the pump station. At that point, sewage would then be pumped by a force main out of the pump station, back through the lot, down 94th Street, north on 3rd Avenue, and then tie into the connection point of the force main, which then takes it all the way down to the Cape May County pump station that I had mentioned earlier. At this point, Mr. Cathcart's going to jump in and actually walk you through the proposed orientation and the pump station building.
This pump station is a wet well pump station. The pumps would be in a deep wet well adjacent to the pump station. The pump station itself is a prefabricated unit, which means all the equipment and electronics and everything are done at the factory. It's about 11 feet wide, 29 feet long, and 12 feet high, because it has to fit on the back of a truck to be delivered. The generator is in a separate building from the controls, a fully insulated room, and totally enclosed to keep it out of the weather. Here's, this is not our pump station, obviously. This is one that was delivered up in Voorhees, New Jersey, but it's similar size and layout to the one that we're specifying now. You can see it comes out the back of a truck. The foundation is prepared for it, and they drop it onto the foundation, fasten it down, and hook everything up. Here's the location, a little bit on the site. We've tried to configure it as far back into the site as possible. The wet well being in the back, that'll be, the top of that will be in grade. The pumps are down in that wet well. The water's conveyed then into the pump station itself, where it's metered, and then discharged through the force main. The access to the site for maintenance and operation will be, and construction for that matter, will be from the parking lot, so there will be no access off 94th or 93rd Street directly. Here's a picture of the site. Right in the center of the screen now is about where the pump station will be. We've spent quite a bit of time, some ladies from the garden club and the shade tree commission were good enough to help me on the site identify all those trees. We're trying to save as much as we can in the front of the site. It's, the previous owner had it certified as a wildlife habitat, and it is used for that, and in keeping with the master plan and so forth, to keep as many natural trees and stuff going as possible. The only invasive species in there are a couple black pines, so it's really a nice little ecosystem on its own.
Bill, could you actually highlight that one tree that I believe that?
Yeah, this one tree, I forget what it's called, but it's, there's only one or two of them on the whole island, and everybody really likes it. I live in the neigh, I happen to live in the neighborhood. I live right across the street from this house, so you can be assured I'm going to try to make it look as good as it can, but that tree is a neighborhood favorite. This is the view from the ground. Some of those bigger trees in the back are going to have to go, but this buffer zone in the front will stay pretty much intact. Here's, we're going to dress it up a little bit, try to make it look more like a Stone Harbor building. It'll have a seamed metal roof, racy metal roof. It'll have hardy board siding, and the, which actually a loading dock in the front will be dressed up to look like a residential front porch with residential style railings and so forth, to make it more acceptable looking in the neighborhood.
Yeah, if I could add to that, Bill, we engaged an architect, and we were very cognizant of how things need to be constructed in Stone Harbor, how they need to fit in, and this was our first pass at this to show mayor and council.
Yeah, like most buildings in Stone Harbor, it'll have to be up to flood elevation, so it's going to be four, that foundation will be four or five feet above grade, like most are in town now. Okay, these are, the architect did these for us. He plunked his rendering down into the site, so he can get an idea of what it's looking at. If I can use my pointer here, this is the wet well, where the pumps are down in that hole, and here's the pump station. All this vegetation here will pretty much stay exactly as it is. We'll make every effort we can during construction to keep the contractor out of there, make him work off the parking lot side instead of coming in from the other directions. There's an area, there'll be a gate here. This is an area where they can pull their truck in and service the pump station and so forth.
Bill, could you point out to everyone where the actual generator for this is?
Yeah, the generator will be in this end of the building, totally enclosed. The generator will only run, they test it periodically, a couple times a month, maybe weekly in the summer, but that'll be done in the middle of the day. It won't come on immediately for every power blip. It'll have to be a real power failure before it comes on. You know, when these little blips of a minute or two, there'll be a delay on it, so experience is, since they put the new metal, the metal poles in, there haven't been very many power failures of any consequence. Just another view from down around the corner a little bit, is what you'd see walking down the sidewalk, hopefully. And this is what, more down to the level of the eye level in the parking lot side.
So two items just to add to this. Those renderings are actually at scale. We took a lot of time to make sure that was the case, so that you weren't getting something out of perspective. And if in the event some of that vegetation cannot be saved during the construction, we can work with the borough to supplement the plantings, to restore that and shield it with some landscaping. So moving along to critical path items, we've identified four general critical paths. The first one is purchase a sanitary sewer pump station, excuse me, sanitary sewer pumps through the Passaic Valley Co-op. I believe that's scheduled for either this meeting or the next meeting. The second critical path item is the purchase of a prefabricated pump station pursuant to the GG exemption in the local public contracts law. I believe that's scheduled for this meeting today. Third item is to install all of the piping that you saw in the previous slides. Sanitary sewer, manholes, force mains, to transfer the flows from the existing pump station to the proposed pump station. We're going to be putting numbers together for your consideration at the next meeting, which is February 5th. We are proposing to utilize the borough's 2019 utility and road program contractor, who is already in town, working in the borough, and that contractor has, on principle, agreed to delay the work for that in order to make this project become a reality due to your timeframes with your FEMA grant. Fourth major critical path item is install the sanitary sewer wet well, building and associated site work, again, in conjunction with the local public contracts law GG exemption. We are finishing the design for these attributes, and we're hopeful to have numbers for you to present at the February 19th council meeting. So as you can see, we're on an expedited schedule, because we're trying to clear the way for your storm sewer pump station, which is tagged to a time-sensitive FEMA grant. This is our proposed schedule. Generally speaking, it's going to take three months for the pumps to arrive through the purchase. It's going to take four months for the prefabricated building to arrive here at the borough. We're going to have a start and stop action on the utility work in the streets. That gap you see in the middle is demobilization for the summer. Installation of the wet well, we believe that we can get that all accomplished, again, before the summer season starts. And bottom line is, we're hoping to be able to flip the switch on this pump station and make it go live at the end of November. We believe that we're going to be able to make that happen a little bit faster, but we are being conservative in that timeframe. And just to kind of graphically show you what we are trying to accomplish, so we're all aware that the summer season is important to the borough, the residents and the property owners, so we're anticipating that everything you see in red, we can accomplish between now and, say, middle of June, before the summer season really ramps up. We'll have a demobilization period and a remobilization in September of this year to accomplish what you see in green, and that would be the last leg of the project to bring the flows to the pump station. And like I said, hopefully we'll have this completed by the end of November, if not a little bit earlier. And lastly, we just have a couple other notable items. We're going to recommend that work on a new pump station lot, not in the streets. Be allowed in the summer if we need to take that time to do that. Segway to that is during that construction, most of the parking lot will be closed or inaccessible, so we want to bring that to your attention. And lastly, due to the nature of the utility work, we're going to require road closures along 93rd, 94th, and 3rd Avenue. As such, we're going to have to coordinate with the county and the school. So it is a big project. You're on a tight timeframe. We're hopeful that this kind of laid out, gave you the history and the need of the project, and laid out how we have to navigate it to a successful fruition. Does anybody have questions? Does everybody like the building the way it looks?
Well done.
Clean, neat, and it looks like Stone Harbor.
I think you did a good job preserving which protected the trees and having it fitting to the neighborhood, and I think that was done well. I mean, away from the parking lot, it looks like a little cottage, kind of back there with the porch.
Yeah, I think.
Make the most of what you can do to pretty up a pump station.
I think people notice the first time they see it, but after they walk by it a couple times.
Yeah.
Forget it's there.
And having Bill Cathcart across the street helps, is he makes it something easy to fence behind there and stuff.
If it makes a funny noise, I'll be there.
Yes.
It's easy for him to keep an eye on the job.
I mean, one question, what you said about the road closure and coordinating with the school. The road closures, do you anticipate for the most part being in the summertime, or is that going to be the entire time, or?
In the fall.
That'll be in the fall, so it won't be, no road closures in the summer?
We don't anticipate that it would have an impact on the school. We're probably going to be closing 94th Street.
Okay.
For some of the utility work, because one gravity line is very deep. We don't think that's going to impact the operations of the school, but when we get into the fall, it will. And then we'll be in the county road.
And then that, what we call the free lot, so the free lot, will, the entire lot will be inaccessible? Will it be any portions available?
Yes, we will attempt to make the contractor consolidate his operation into a certain area, and that's going to be big at first.
Okay.
And it's going to shrink down as the job progresses.
Okay.
He's going to need, you know, an equipment trailer or two there to hold his supplies and stuff.
Okay.
Beginning to have a lot of heavy equipment, and of course, when they deliver that pump station, that's going to be a big crane.
Okay, so it's going to be kind of fluid, how much lot is available, and, you know, so on and so forth as you go?
Yeah, we're hopeful that once we get the wet well in, the building foundation, and hopefully the building set, at that point, it's just, I don't think there'll be major equipment in the parking lot, so as quickly as we can navigate that, or as quickly as we can turn the lot back over to maximize parking.
We'll make sure the contractor, you know, provides necessary security to keep people where they're supposed to be.
Okay.
And the crane's just one day.
Yeah, just one day. It's going to be a big day.
Okay, good. Anybody have questions? Comments? Observations? Thank you. Well done. So while they pack up, we'll start with our regular work session, public safety.
Okay, just for your information, the lifeguard captain and OEM are unable to make it today, so we'll have a shortened presentation. First up, court.
Good afternoon. Excuse my voice, I've been coughing my head off and starting to lose it off as soon. I put in everybody's mailboxes the other day the 2019 year-end numbers for the court, and I have a comparison to 2018 for you. When you see the ACS, that is our Automated Complaint System. That includes all criminal complaints, all borough ordinances that have been filed. For 2019, it was 219 complaints. In 2018, we had 130, so there were 89 more complaints filed this year. ATS is all the traffic and parking tickets that have been issued. In 2019, we had 985. Back in 2018, we had 1,309. So we were down, what, this year, 324 from last year. Don't ask me why, because I don't write the tickets. Our income, again, was down 20,000 overall between 2019 and 2018. The borough's collection of the funds, because the state gets part of that money, the county gets part of that money, this borough got $5,600 less for the year. If anybody has any questions, needs anything explained, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie.
Fire department?
The fire chief is in Wisconsin, looking at a new truck, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So he is not here. So you've got a lot of time, Chief Goucher. Come one up.
You know I love time to public speak.
Give an hour.
Oh, boy. Well, if I could just start, I wasn't here for your reorganization meeting. I was at an Oprah training that day, but I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to Mrs. Gensimer, as well as the new administrator, Mr. Smith. Forgive me for not being here last month, or earlier this month, rather. The report for the police department for the month of December 2019, there were 31 motor vehicle stops. No one was arrested in last month. An update on personnel, Officer Santini graduated the Cape May County Police Academy last week, and he earned the director's award, which is the hardest award to receive in the academy. It's basically the highest overall combined average in firearms, PT, classroom work, driving, things of that nature. So we're awfully proud of being able to pick him up. We knew we had a, we had a good one right from the start. He's been assigned to Sergeant Secor on Squad Three, and is currently involved in the field officer training program. We have one recruit currently attending the winter Class II academy, and he's expected to graduate in April of 2020. We'll be finishing interviews this week for the remaining Class II and Class I positions for the season, and unfortunately, I received a resignation letter for Officer Shawna Dixon last week. That takes effect this Friday, January 24th. She was accepted into the New Jersey State Police Academy, which we're awfully proud of her for getting that. However, another person that we will be down and we hate to lose. Subsequent to that, I submitted a personnel requisition to replace her position, and we're just waiting on the hopeful approval to replace that position. And once we, if we do get permission to replace, then we'll begin a selection process as soon as we can. An update on county communications, everything is going very, very well. It's an evolving process, little bumps here in the road here and there, but overall, no problems at all.
That's good to hear.
Very, very good.
Nice, nice.
The radio system, we should, the vendor actually starts installing the bidirectional amplifier, which I've been referring to here and there. They should actually start tonight, they'll be working tonight, tomorrow, and 21, 22, and 23 at nighttime to get that installed, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be up on the 700 megahertz radio system, which would be great in time for President Trump's visit, so that'd be helpful.
Great.
Okay. Any questions on the monthly report or anything?
Anything for anybody?
Nope. If I may have another?
Sure, you have plenty of time.
Excuse me, excuse me while I fumble through this, but I'd like to congratulate and welcome our new borough administrator, Mr. Smith, to the borough. Please feel free to let me know if there's anything that I can assist or the police department can assist you with in your transition to your new position. The police department's with you, and anything we can do to help, our door is always open to you, okay?
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. If I may, respectfully, I go by Tom.
But then in the meantime, we all have to deal with the Mr. and Mrs. you give us.
Right.
It should be like this two-way street thing going here.
I understand there's a bit of hypocrisy there, but truly out of respect, truly. As this is Mrs. Goucher's final meeting with us, on behalf of the Stone Harbor Police Department, I would like to take this time to say a few words of acknowledgement and thanks to Mrs. Goucher for her dedicated years of service to the borough and the citizens of Stone Harbor. I've been lucky enough to work with Mrs. Goucher for the past six years, and while I've come across a host of great law enforcement leaders in my time, Mrs. Goucher tops the list of incredible civilian leaders that I have had the pleasure to work with. I think she would have made a great police chief, actually. While we all know Mrs. Goucher has a number of positive traits, I've always admired her for a few in particular. First, the sheer amount of knowledge that she possesses in this position. I can't tell you how many times I've sat back in these meetings and thought, how does she remember all that stuff? It absolutely amazes me. So that's first and foremost. However, there's so much more. Her unrelenting professionalism, her dedication, honesty, calm demeanor, reasonableness, a great sense of humor, and lastly, her motherlike care of the borough and its employees. These are the type of attributes that not only contribute to her being a successful administrator, but more importantly, in my eyes, a quality person. Because all this is said, because when all is said and done, people may or may not remember you for what you accomplished or what you didn't accomplish, but they always remember what kind of person you were. I think it's safe to say that Mrs. Goucher will in fact be remembered years from now as someone who had a lasting positive effect on the borough and its employees. I offer my sincere appreciation for the professional guidance she has provided me over the past several years. I always knew that I could lean on Mrs. Goucher for an honest, no BS assessment on whatever issue I may have brought in front of her. And usually, after leaving her office, nine times out of 10, I felt better than when I walked in. I'm forever grateful to have had the pleasure of working with you, and will never forget the tireless support you provided me and the members of the Stone Harbor Police Department. We would not have progressed half as far without you. I wish you and your family nothing but the best for a long and happy retirement. Even though you'll be beginning a new chapter in your life, that doesn't mean that friends need to disappear. Please don't become a stranger, because you always have a friend in SHPD. Jill, congratulations and God bless.
I finally got it. Thank you.
Well said, Chief. You're right out there, Joe, you need a tissue or anything?
I'm okay.
Okay. So we're going to move on out of public safety, unless somebody, anybody got any issues for public safety you'd like to raise at this time? Moving on to recreation and tourism. Jenny, going to come up and do a couple of special events?
Good afternoon. I have a couple of special event applications. They're circulating right now. Both of these are just for discussion, or if you have any questions today, we're not looking for approval on them until our next meeting in February. The first one is the Ocean View at Avalon Condominium Association. This is an annual owners' meeting that they have every year at the Recreation Department. It's for Saturday, April 18th. It's for two hours, just from 10:00 to noon. They're just asking for the use of the building and for us to set up some tables and chairs for the owners there. We charge them $300 for the building for that use. There is also a $200 refundable security deposit that they have to pay. Like I said, they did, they are missing their insurance certificate. There is an insurance policy that they provided, there's a lot of pages, but the actual certificate that lists us is not there, but they'll have to, they'll have to provide that before we approve. And that's an, we've done this for the last couple of years.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years now, yep.
The second one is the Garden Club of Stone Harbor. It's the annual plant and bake sale. The dates on the agenda, it's actually, the actual sale dates are May 9th and 10th. The eight, they will start the setup on the 8th. That's just the delivery of the plants to the firehouse, so technically, the event is the 9th and the 10th, Saturday, Sunday, from 8:00 to 2:00. The location is at the Stone Harbor Firehouse for the plant sale, and then the lawn outside the Waterworks Building for the bake sale. The bake sale is just on Saturday. This is the same event that they've had year over year. They're just requesting that the plants be stored overnight.
They're just requesting that the plants be stored overnight at the firehouse. They'll start setting up Saturday, probably like 7:00 AM. They'll need tables and chairs at both locations, some no parking signs. At the firehouse, there'll be no parking on Saturday only in front of the bake sale, which will be from the Chamber of Commerce office on 96th Street to Second Avenue. I also need their insurance certificate, which will be provided prior to any approval as well.
Okay.
So, those are the two events I have. And like I said, they're just circulating right now still, so they've got to get through all the departments as well. In addition to the special events, I am working on updating and coordinating the print and mailing of the Borough Information Guide this year. So, that's what I'm working on right now. And then, just a quick update on the Arts and Crafts Festival. I've got so far 83 returning vendors and 16 new vendors that have applied. So, just as a little update. And I'd also just, everything that Chief Shutter said, ditto. We'll take up all your time, but thank you for all your guidance and advice, Jill.
Just one quick question, Jenny, on that mailing, that spring mailing. What's the date we're looking at getting that out by?
We'd like to get that into people's homes at least two weeks before the first bulk trash pickup. So, it'd be like the first week of, I think, the date.
March?
March, yeah. Should be the end of February.
Right, because the bulk trash is what the second?
I'd like to get it into the mail February 21st, because it takes about a week to get to people.
Okay. Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, for you. Just real quick, can you explain the process of circulating the events? Application?
So, the application comes in to me first. I get, just, you know, put it together, review it, make sure there's, you know, see what's missing specifically. Usually, it's the insurance is missing. A lot of people don't want to send me that certificate until they know they're going to get approved. But then, I just put that together. It starts with Public Works gets it first typically, and then they'll pass it on to Safety, which will go to the police firehouse. It also will go to the Borough Administrator, and then finally, the Chair of the Recreation and Tourism.
And how does it travel?
Just through the inner office. It goes from person to person.
All righty, thank you.
It's a hard copy, yeah.
And you can see the one page shows you.
It shows you from, yeah, so it'll just go in that order.
And they all, so by the time we're looking at it and approving it, any issues, they've written out from the department heads, any challenges or any issues like that, you'll see on there as well.
And it does take about a week for it to travel, you know, from department to department.
So, the physical document travels?
Yeah, I do keep a copy of it as it's traveling, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing? Hi, Tina.
Hi. So, finally got all of this information on our quad fold for our, all of our summer programming. So, went over that, fine tooth and comb, everything spelled correctly, all the dates are correct. I wrote 2020, not 19, so we're good. So, that information's great. I'm working on getting all of the paperwork for the EUSs. Only half of them are about local, so I'm just waiting on getting those emails back so we can renew those contracts. A lot of them are on their third year right now. And then, the ones that started a new one last year are the field hockey and lacrosse. So, they're the only new EUSs. And I just got word back today from the last staff member that I was waiting for that all of the summer staff is returning, so.
That's good.
Hundred percent retention rate is pretty awesome.
That's very good.
We do have some office hours available because of the addition of that tennis building. So, if we know anybody, just send them my way. I am starting to get some applications in, some inquiries about it, but as far as, everyone's interested in the camp counselor and the basketball coaching and stuff like that, but we're completely full with that as everyone came back, which is, which is great.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, it's just, and then all of the programming on our rec desk, which is our registration software, is all ready to go, too. I was just, I went in and did everything, just waiting on confirmation from the EUSs that their start dates and the other dates. So, today, I had everything ready, and then Sambar came in and said they weren't going to do Saturdays anymore, that she's dedicating that Saturday to her family time.
Oh, okay.
I might, we might, I might come, I know I was talking with Mrs. Crafts about maybe adding like a Zumba class on a Saturday.
Okay.
Since we do have that opening, and that's something that we're missing as far as in our programming. So, I might, we might come with a request. I know it's like tap dancing on the cutoff of that, but if we can put in a request to add a Zumba class on that Saturday and replace that Sambar class, I think that, that would be really beneficial to our programming, especially because Saturdays are usually the mom days, because the kids get all the whole weekend, so it'd be good to do that programming. Other than that?
So, now we have a full Recreation Advisory Committee?
Yes.
So, if we can get some, you know, get that monthly meeting scheduled on the books and get that moving along.
And I know that we have a meeting at the end of this month as well.
Okay.
So, then we can probably solidify stuff, like a date for?
For getting started, yep. There's a couple of new folks on it that we need to reach out to and get the regular meetings started up.
Yeah, and the reason why I had called that meeting at the end of this month is we've noticed some potential safety hazards on 96th Street's playground.
Okay.
Just with rusting that happens of the location of where it's at. I just wanted everyone to kind of get a view on it, because we've noticed it. Tim does an inspection once a week.
Yeah, I thought they were, okay.
And then, in the summertime, he does like twice a week. So, he goes out there, and then he does like a formal inspection and once a month.
Isn't that part of the Safety Committee, too? Doesn't the Safety Committee look at the playgrounds? Yeah.
It's on our, yeah, it's on the checklist.
Yeah, okay.
So, he formally submits one to Public Works once a month now, but we go out, because, I mean, we have a lot of, not saying a lot of downtime, but enough where he can drive around to the facilities and check out, because we did just have a piece of broken equipment down at Chelsea.
Okay.
One of the adult exercise equipments. So, they were able to phone that in, and then the company was really responsive with that, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they were great.
Is it still under warranty?
No. But they were.
It's been quite a few years, so that really.
They were the ones actually reached out to me, and they were like, "Hey, we have everything under control." And that was, that was awesome about it. And then, work with Public Works with, you know, getting caution tape out there, make sure that, you know, we're taking care of everything. But in that, I did go down 96th Street, and there are some safety hazards, just that we want to bring to attention with the rusting. It's nothing that we obviously can't wire brush, but there's a lot of surface area to wire brush and sand down and repaint again, so.
Okay.
Just maybe explore some options with that.
And I have not forgotten the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. I'm trying to think of something new. I want something new. New and innovative. Think new and innovative.
I got it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have anything for recreation and tourism? Natural resources? I love how all the eyes go to Jill. Jill goes to Lenore. Why don't you just go straight to Lenore?
Yeah, it's easy. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, everybody. And Ms. Goucher, I'm going to miss you. It's been great working with you, and definitely have a lot of respect for what you do and who you are, so good luck in the future. A few quick reports on my end, starting with the Bird Sanctuary. We've been discussing the Fragmities Management Plan, that's, and permits that are working through process. They've been submitted by Princeton Hydro and are under review right now by the Bird Sanctuary Committee. The Sanctuary Committee's going to meet sometime next week and review those. The Wetlands Institute's doing an internal review right now. They look pretty good at first glance. They meet all the requirements that we would like. So, the Sanctuary Committee will review those. If they approve them, then they will be submitted to Natural Resources Committee. Natural Resources meets at the end of next week, and from there, we'll see where they move and how they go. That, the first phases of that and the permits were budgeted into the Natural Resource Budget for this year. So, we're kind of on track to move forward with that, pending the sets of approvals in front of us still. The Clean Shores Program completed a week of work in early December, working along Second Avenue near 111th Street. If you've driven by there, you've probably, you've probably noticed that work. They're clearing underbrush and invasive plants. That work is in the upland habitat, whereas the work we're talking about with the Fragmities Plan is in the wetland habitat. So, that's why it's a whole different beast and needs permitting and, and careful management. They made excellent progress, and they also returned for a day in December and worked an area up Meadow Walk. If you've been up Meadow Walk, which is along the levee, there was an area, a small area of upland that was heavily invaded with invasives. And that work was actually preceding the possibility of the wetland work, because they wouldn't be able to use the same treatment methodology. They're scheduled for another week of work in February, February 3rd to 7th, and we'll continue work along Second Avenue around the entrance to Holly Path and northward from that area along Second. We've been coordinating between Clean Shores and Public Works, and we should be all set to go for that week. Sanctuary signage has been delivered to Public Works, and I met with the team out to discuss installation and location. The, these are two-sided signs. They're 24 by 36, two-sided. They have, they'll match the newer signage, so we're using the same vendor, the same look for all those signs and gradually removing the older signs. I'm seeking to quadruple the number of signs out there, because I know how important signage is to the borough.
Quadruple those signs, right?
I'm just seeing if who's paying attention. No, and in fact, we will be removing the old signs. If you're familiar with the area around the pump house, there's a three-sided sign there right now that's in, not in great shape, so that's coming out for a two-sided sign. So, I get minus one on the count, and then we'll be replacing two signs that are at Holly Path with this one two-sided sign. So, I get another one there if, if we want to keep count. And these signs are, the one at the pump house, there's a general information sign about the sanctuary, the history of the sanctuary, and its importance as a conservation area. And on the back side is a map of the habitats and the trail system, and a description of what one would see if they walked on those trails. And the one at Holly Path, it's the same map again, so that one's a duplicate. And then, on the front side is information about Holly Path and its importance. And they look really great, and be excited to get them up. So, as I said, Public Works will get them up as they get to them sometime before. Spring run folks are there, so it's nice that they have time.
They're really, really nice, and they're easy to understand. You can tell where you are and what you're standing next to.
Yeah, so they'll be, they'll be nice. And that is really kind of, with that, we've effectively replaced pretty much all the signage that we targeted for replacement that was old and faded, and a significant reduction in the number of signs. There is a plan to add three general information signs, and we're working on where those would go and what those would look like. It will still be way, way less than the number of signs that were out there. And that would be targeted for kind of a fall design and plan. Dune Vegetation Management Projects is another topic. There was a Dune Vegetation Management Project at 115th and 118th Street. That's now, and it's, I guess it just finished its third year of monitoring. Lomax is responsible for that renewal, the reviews of those. They completed their review of that. They found no issues identified, and in fact, there's no remedial action necessary, and they documented very high survivorship of the planted vegetation that's there and documented native vegetation becoming established in the project area on its own. So, that project is moving along very well, and they really haven't had any issues, with that being a successful project. Natural Resources just received a new request for a project plan, and that'll be reviewed at the upcoming meeting for consideration. The final topic is, if you all might remember, the U.S. Geological Survey was petitioned, the both Avalon and Stone Harbor boroughs about two years ago now, to come and do work along the front beach. And it was a geophysical survey to do bathymetry surveys, so depth profiling and subsurface for some mapping projects they were doing. They originally thought it would be fun to do that in the middle of the summer, and we had some conversations with them. And if you remember that now, we moved them off. Well, of course, it didn't exactly work the way they wanted, because they ran head-on into very poor weather in rough seas, and then Hurricane Florence knocked them out. So, they only did about a third of the work that they were trying to do, and then they just kind of went home when they realized they couldn't get it done. So, they, they are coming back to complete that work. They're planning to work what they're calling Part One from May 31st to June 12th, and then Part Two from October 5th to 30th. The first phase of the work, the May-June work, if you want to think about it that way, is going to utilize a 26-foot research vessel and collect bathymetry data. They'll be in four to 15 feet of water and no closer than 250 feet from the beach, is their proposal, from the shoreline. They won't need any beach access or any support vehicles on beach. So, that's their proposal. Seems like that's probably okay. I did notify them. They asked me for a quick review of where the hitch points would be, and I did notify them that Borough Ordinance is actually 300 feet from the shoreline for motorized craft, so they would need to consider that and address that in their proposal to you to do this work. And then, the second phase is October 5th to 13th, and that's in fact where they would need support vehicles on the beach and the use of personal watercrafts, because they're towing equipment that, they trail behind jet skis effectively to get in the shallow water. So, the bigger boat is offshore, and then that distance between shoreline, they use a much smaller boat. So, they targeted that October survey to be hopefully beyond Hurricane and also past the heavy usage of the beachfront. That plan will have to come, obviously, before you all for approval, but it also has to go through the New Jersey Division Fish and Wildlife Migratory Shorebirds and things like that may, may, they're going to have to coordinate with them as well. So, there's still some steps here, but it's essentially the same plan as the first phase of work that you all looked at. And they're going to make, they're planning, like I said, I, they sent it to me, asked me for some reviews. I gave them some, some thoughts about some of the things that I thought would be a problem, and then they'll make contact directly with both Avalon and Stone Harbor shortly, if they haven't already done so. I don't know if they've already done so or not. So, that's kind of just me letting you know that's on the, on the docket and something they're going to approach the borough with. And I didn't, as I said, I didn't see any difference from the original plan that was approved, once we moved them into those timeframes. That's my report. Any questions?
Anybody have anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lenore.
Thank you.
We have our first Shade Tree Committee this Friday, and then, as Lenore said, we have our first natural resource next Friday.
Okay. We have one item of discussion. The Borough Solicitor is going to lead us through the vacation of First Avenue, which is happening in concert with the project at the Villa Maria.
So, in conjunction, in conjunction with that project, there's been a request to vacate a portion of First Avenue, and it's wholly contained within the development, which means when you vacate normally, half of the roadway will go to one side of the property owners, half of the roadway to the others. This is totally owned in Villa Maria, so it's just going to create more space for them when the borough vacates. We don't have a graphic drawing yet. We will shortly, but I wanted to take the temperature of council to see if there was any issue with that. From a legal perspective, we're fine with it. It's within the property boundaries, and it will make for a nicer project over there. Any comment preliminarily?
So, First Avenue was in front of the Villa Maria, correct? At, when the map first was developed, no?
So, yes.
Because I know between 113th and 14th Street, there used to be a vacant space there. That's where everybody decided to make that loop and stop and look at the ocean, and that's all they did. But that connected to that, and then the borough, years ago, sold those lots on the beach. So, I'm guessing that was the other half of it.
It's the other portion.
Gotcha.
So, I will have a graphic drawing prepared, which would have to be done in order to do the vacation, and a description, but I wanted to, before telling them to move ahead, I didn't think there would be objection. Just wanted to talk with council, see what your thoughts were.
May I, I have a question. Why does the tax map show that as a paper street at the current time?
Because?
You're talking about 112th?
It's a paper street.
Or the First Avenue?
Does that mean that the borough owns it, or Villa Maria owns it?
Well, currently, it could be utilized to be a street if the borough wanted to pave and undergo those costs.
So, who owns the street?
There, so we technically own that right of way? If we vacate it, it means we would be giving that up. If we vacated, it means we would be giving that up.
We can probably look at it.
So at this time, to answer your question, at this time, the answer to the question is the borough owns it?
That's why they're asking for the vacation.
I know what you're thinking.
My only comment would be is if the borough does vacate, if that's what she was to do, that area was earmarked, at least in conversations over the last couple of years, to use for drainage, to remove the 111th Street outfall for like a recharge area. So if you decide that that's what you want to do, I would recommend that we discuss getting an easement to install storm sewer facilities in that right-of-way and use it.
Do you see that as any kind of an issue, or then that's just something that actually gets written up as?
That would be.
Part of the vacation, part of the.
What would happen is, yeah, when you do the vacation, you would actually do an easement.
And one of the meetings that we had with Villa Maria and their professional team, we did vocalize that, so they are aware that that was something that we were contemplating.
And when we do this vacation, that gets done by ordinance, correct?
It does.
Okay.
If we pull the map up, you can see it better. I put the, whatever, you can see what we're talking about. I was behind his mouth. It'll be behind my head. So here. And that went straight through to 112th. So from here to that. That would be 112th. That would be 112th.
Right. That's why we're waiting for the graphic drawing to see the exact extent of it. That would be the general area.
Can I ask you, on the tax map, it shows that the first lot on 112th Street, that would be the beachfront lot, is a continuation of First Avenue. Is that included with the vacation?
I don't know until I actually see what their drawing is. They talked conceptually, so they're supposed to provide me with what, the exact area that they're looking for.
And you mean the one close to 112th and the beach? That would be like it would run into it through 111th Street? Okay.
And so that it's clear, I'm not asking for a final sign-off from council till you actually see what the drawing is, because I need to see it also.
Right.
And we would need to look at it for where we would retain the easement. But conceptually, what I wanted to do is run it by you and see if conceptually you're on board.
The tax map shows that lot is owned by the villa? Or the Sisters of Immaculate Heart?
Wait, excuse me. Say your question again.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's what I'm asking. Who owns that lot on the tax map?
On the tax map, the borough. It's a paper.
No, not the street. I thought you were talking about that lot. Oh, okay.
First Avenue deadends into that lot, but that lot is included in the paper street.
Right.
Or the borough owns the lot. I'm not clear.
Okay. That's something that Mark can look at. We'll look at that.
I think you have to, like Mark is saying, see, get some drawings of what they're proposing and then have a meeting with them, with the engineer, to see what we need to do on the borough's behalf of that. We can work together before we, you know, move any further.
Okay, so that's everything that Solicitor will look at and will bring back to us. Any more questions on that? And you're good with all your questions concerning, okay. Anybody got anything else for that? We have a little bit of time, so we can do our closed session at this time, rather at the end of the meeting, if that is the desire of the clerk, who we don't want to rile up. Okay, so at this time, we are about to consider a resolution to go into private session. We would appreciate if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we'll come back in the public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It's also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2020 S-34.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlehan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcek?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsak?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anything in here, though.[1798.33]